The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, August 22nd, 2019.
We'll call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we'll move on to the roll call.
Mayor Robinson?
Present.
Councilman Blengas?
Here.
Councilman Carson?
Here.
Councilman DeKalis?
Here.
Councilman Thompson?
Present.
Councilman Alberg?
Present.
City Clerk Lee?
Present.
City Attorney Fiall?
Fiall.
Fiall?
Yeah, the owner or...
City Attorney Alberger? And then, City Public Court Supervisor Crayfrah?
Here.
City Attorney Kraft?
She's here, she would be received from another place.
City Multiple Court Judge Foster?
Here.
And City Fire Chief Rivera?
Here.
Building Official Assistant?
Here.
Chair of the College of...
With that, we'll open the meeting for public comments. Please state your name.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and council members. For the record, I'm Caroline McIntosh, I'm a member of White Mountain County Tourism Association. I'm here to talk about a judge that I am number four, and I want to, I want to say I appreciate the council looking at ways to help for the deferred maintenance in this community. Their roads really do need a lot of help. And I appreciate them looking at different methods for that. However, I think that my suggestion, instead of taking easy money that is being multiplied in this county for tourism, and we have Mr. Blengas and Mr. Spear to thank for starting these programs and really generating the interest we have of our groups that are all volunteers, and gave them the extra money to put on these events and fill our hotel rooms. What I would like to suggest instead is that you take the long view and look at a grant writer. We're leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, on the table for our roads, for our parks, for many other initiatives that the city needs money. And I would hope that it's just not easy pickings. Sure, you can take money, but really, is that the wisest thing? Because we'll be affecting so many quality of life and personal events here. So I hope that you consider that and really look at a strategic plan that you're looking at the money that is available. Thank you.
I'm Mary Ann Henry. I'm the chair of the White Mountain Horse Races and I'm the vice-chair of the White Mountain Land Board. I've been working on horse races for 12 years and this year I was the chairman. We had exciting results. We had record-breaking per natio handle for White Mountain Horse Races, the highest ever in the history of 35 years of having a horse race this year. Funds from Tony Rappel Vial to make this happen. We did receive by Eastwood County and of course, our great, wonderful sponsors. This wonderful event cannot take place without extra funding. It just can't happen. Another thing is we have to consider the historical value of the horse races and also the fact that it adds so much financial vitality to our community. Monday following the horse races, I received a phone call from Rex Williams. He's in charge of Portico Racing in Nintah, and he was overjoyed to tell me how wonderful they are, how excited they are for us, and how thrilled that we are on the pinnacle of great things here in White Mountain County. Will not happen without the extra funding. So I just hope that you will consider voting out item number four. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Nancy Herms. I'm with the Be the Outdoor Enthusiasts. If you haven't heard of Be the Outdoor Enthusiasts, we organize running and skiing events for the community. We've been doing this since 2012 and we've been receiving funding from the Tourism Board ever since we got started. We rely heavily on that grant money. We couldn't offer the quality events that we do. If we lost that funding, I think we would either have to drop some of our events or just not provide all that we do for the community. We also have people that come on top of these events too. Over the last year, we've been working really closely with the Tourism Board and they've been helping us with marketing and all that. So we're hoping to grow and would really like to continue having this opportunity to provide events for the city and community. And I think, I know if I continued to be the Outdoor Enthusiast, I'd be devastated. If I could provide events for the community, I think the community could also be disappointed if we didn't have those opportunities for our city, since we're such a small town. Thanks.
Good afternoon, this is Kristen, 223 Altman. I'm against item number four. Let's look at grants, as mentioned before, and also if we have a VA area, look at the VA grants available. But let's not do the easy pickings. I mean, we're trying to promote our community. Taking money away is not going to help us anymore, thank you.
My name is Maury Notzelberger, this is on. Under business, item number four. Why change a room rate now? Touring Recreation Board offers grants and marketing services and the new project has provided Ely and White Mountain with more activities and marketing tools. It's only been here a year, so why take money away from them? Faustine had a great job. And also remember, maybe we're getting campus, you know, the cannabis money? So don't mess with the touring rate.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Scott Leidy. I wanted to talk about the room tax money, item number four. I'd like to let you know how much this helped out the organization, this club in the community. I can't think of the last time that amateur trap association, state USAES shoot, long distance rifle shoot, an interim 22 league shoot, or any shooting sport or activity's been put on in the community until last year. With the help of the track line, stuff about a cap seat, very well put together, holiday shoots with over 60 participants and their families who spent at least only four hours a week. So with more to come. We've got the ATA Association, Amateur Trap Association Nevada, also put on a north and south shoot next year. We want to put on the shoot that pits the north against the south in a trap shooting competition. It's a great place to be in Ely, Nevada, best ever. So we definitely want to make sure we keep that going. We don't want to lose the room tax money, leave it the way it is. Mr. Cobal, same way, he's played on an archery shoot for over 30 plus years. Couldn't do it without money. So we really need to keep that the way it is. There's plenty of clubs that have benefited from this. Pretty mature, any of those activities you go on. So please keep the funding where it lies. Thank you.
Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who's the new guy? Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 714, you're considering possible approval of board number 726. Is that true? So what you're attempting to do? Are you increasing the outdoor activity 0.5% to 1% dedicating it to the city, the Parks and Recreation Department and for cemetery? And then taking and dedicating another 2.5% of gross revenue tax from the city, for the city road department? It's not very clear. It appears your city staff cannot properly manage the terms of the city without constant draws of new taxes. Mr. Mayor, you need to reorganize. Those that can't do their job have got to go, and some of them have got to go. No more taxes, Mr. Mayor. Let me remind you, when Mr. Blengas said on the County Tourist Record, bonuses of approximately 300,000 were given out over a five to six year period. You didn't pave any streets? As a matter of fact, the Tourist Record went to the county RTC to pave in front of the convention center. Can have it both ways. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda items 71 and 2 here are considered possible approval of two home modifications. One is from Mr. Beecher and the second from Mr. Peterson. Neither showed up at the planning commission meeting to answer questions. Neither provided proof of legal ownership or property, law commission of a property owner who run a business that had location that was the case. I was surprised that neither attorney had a city business license. I know that Hixblan has been working for other boards in the cities of Ely. And if any of them are not properly licensed in the city of Ely, it's not applied to the city in any capacity. The city regulations are always required, excuse me, city regulations have always required those applying for home modifications to be present to answer questions or the matter slash application was contained until that requirement could be accomplished. You've got to stop selectively enforcing the law. You've got to stop intentionally discriminating. You can't have it both ways. I don't care who the class is, you've got to treat everybody the same, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, to consider possible approval to extend engineering, available based on engineering, the city needs to open this up for a proposal. See if the taxpayer can get a proper or better deal, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, Avenue D near the Holiday Inn is not crowned properly. Criminal Better is not to the city standard of the L shape. Was not approved by the city council, is a straight back. Walkway behind the, walkway behind the north side of the government better is not lip, it's up 45%. And person that wheelchair can't sit without that, and neither can somebody can navigate properly, or has verbal walking.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Any more public comment? Seeing none of whom on to item three, Mayor, discussion for possible action, approval of agenda including removal of agenda item. I have no changes for this agenda.
In the case, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented to us.
I'll second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
I am for a city department report, fire chief.
I have nothing to report for this night, is there? Just kind of slowed down, but we still working hard, volunteering, creative assets. I don't have that many minutes, because kind of like volunteers, they're just going to get, and then communicate, the new kind of fire chief, so.
And if he's started?
Yes, yes.
How's recruiting going for us?
Still working at it. Get a few more, we're going to continue to look over and go in A and T one, that's the basic, and get a lot of stuff, veterans.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Police chief is not here. Municipal project?
Thank you. Keep in mind that nothing in your report is the preferred answer. I'm going to have to disappoint you. I have three items to roll over tonight. Number one, as to the standard reported in that supplemental material, but I do want to point out to you that after a conversation with the mayor, we supplemented that report with a monthly community service report. So this being the first time you've seen it, it may not have sent you, but it'll give us month-to-month tracking on the amount of community service that is provided coming out of the municipal court for city programs, principally in the public works area, landfill, recycling, street road cleaning, sometimes parks and things on a seasonal basis. Same sort of work, but now we've had that report come out of the computer system and now you will have it too. Second point is, I want to let you know that the new prosecutors, Mackenzie and Jane, are coming into the court, performing, have resumed duties, if you will, they're taking over the functions of the prior prosecutors. And that's going smoothly. They're still very unsettled. They're learning some of the mechanisms we use in court. I'm learning some things from them too, that may hopefully move cases faster. That's my goal, is to get cases closed after, paid, concluded, recorded, and done. And so it's a good opportunity, while I'm willing, it's also a great opportunity. So we want to do some things for each other. But I give it a real positive, it's also a positive. Lastly, today we've got a preliminary, and I just got this, it's afternoon, so around me today, so I can hand out for it. The courts nationwide are subject to a four-year audit cycle for their financial handling and for their procedural compliance. So this is the first time I've, I thought this, they just finished their field work today. And the lead clerk, Mayor Cringle, and I had about 45 minutes going over some of their preliminary findings with them. We got a clean audit in terms of the financial handling and stuff like that, the property accounted for, money that went through the lead to go, no money missing, we secured funds at night, you know, all that sort of stuff. But they did give us, and they're going to give us a full report that deals with some of our procedural compliance. There's some things we're doing that comply with the state requirements. We've never put them in a manual, so that's going to be their lead request. But we need to update our office manual as to who's responsible for moving money between the buildings, how often financial reports are sent from the city to the court. Like I say, most of these things are being, almost all of them are being done, but we've never written them down. And of course, that's an internal control issue, because if I or Lenaya or people are believed, their substitutes don't have a roadmap on how to do it. It can't just be by custom inheritance, you know, we're supposed to have. CPA's life, I think that's a great idea. Manual, I think it's a great idea too. So, and we're further behind on that than I actually thought. So we're going to be able to start working on that now. Their report to the state does not do until March. And they'll be making a report to you, I think in conjunction with your financial reports in November, December, but I think we'll have a lot of fixes in place by the time that report comes to you. So I want to give you a heads up for what we just learned about today. Like I said, updating the procedure manual, making sure that we and the city county folk use the same numbering and language, if that's a fair way to put it, that we're communicating in the same language, so that the reports are apples-to-apples comparisons, because they're not right now. And, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Judge, excuse me. Do you have any citations going to other courts for definitely want to have you sit on a case going to Eureka or wherever else?
They had two sorts of phenomena like that. The first year that I was a judge, there were two cases that I couldn't handle because I previously represented individuals, both off of the tribe, you know, in the tribal court system. So Judge Bishop stood in on both of those cases.
But it's not an ongoing thing to do.
I've had anything like that in a year and a half or more. I've been there a little over two and a half years. Those were both in the first year. There was also an issue of kind of forum shopping or judge shopping, not out of our court, but to our court, where cases might come to us rather than other available courts, because the rumor was, they were formally reviewed, that NHP had preference to where they took those cases. That kind of came subtly and went away subtly. That was also over a year ago, I think. I'm not aware of anything like that. Prosecutors might be the ones to ask about that, but I'm pretty sure they'll tell you there's no forum shopping, judge shopping going on in the criminal prosecution. As far as cases I can't handle, it was two defendants, two juvenile defendants, both related to a father that I represented up at the tribe in like 2013, I think.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Judge.
City clerk?
We received payment for year one of the NDL grant, so that's great. And also our OHD signage grant. And my email has been having trouble, receiving emails from yesterday and this morning. So hopefully that problem will be fixed tomorrow. I can send now, but if you've sent me something, I apologize and I have it this morning. And in regards to Mr. Chatches' concerns of home occupations, during break between planning commission and city council, city building official Chris Johnson printed off the ownership for both those properties. James Beecher always did phone, and I have a written statement from Mackenzie Peterson that is signed by Tom Bath, the landlord of the commercial building.
Do we have a formal requirement that people applying for home occupation warrants are being present?
No, I can't find anything.
Any other questions for the secretary, anything else? Thank you. City treasurer?
Just reporting that the auditors didn't handle a little work even they left about in one and two today. Things are a little, they're going, but a lot of things have been done. I did ask when I thought that we might have completed report and shoot and hopefully we can mid-October to the part of the framework is what it's looking like. But the good thing is, it's mostly entries by, hopefully by the end of September, it will be close enough that I can start putting out some financial statements. They're just unaudited financial statements for the current year, so that we can get a handle on this. So I'm on the clock here.
Any questions for the treasurer?
I got one for you. Is it your methods madness to put the auditors in a room with no air conditioning to get them out of here?
Yes, they got them out of here, so now. We really had no other place to put them. Originally, they go in the mayor's office, but the mayor now has an office there. And then we were going to put them in the attorney's room, but then we got attorneys that are going to come there. We literally had no place. But I did provide a fan and some popsicles.
That's very kind of you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Yeah, I just want to say that everybody has had a really kind in our first week, basically. And I don't have anything else to report, I just want to say thanks and hi to everybody here in the county, and I'm just buying products, so.
City public works?
Yeah, I've got a public work. On the streets, the 28th, next one thing will be finishing up the Mill Street project, the chip. And then after that, we'll be doing some roads, some ceiling and stuff like that. I'll get you better bids than you can find in the middle of the night. And the wastewater treatment plant, we had an inspection yesterday. And then we, I can do it very well, they'll be giving us a written report when it's done, I'll keep it. And in the landfill, the compactor is about a week away, roughly, and being completed. They did find some cracks in the frame, they had to go out and repair that way. But everything's healthy, good.
I have a question, Mike. For those of you that don't know, we split up in the water department and they're working 10 hours a day, seven days a week now. How's that going and do you see a benefit from it?
I really do, I see a big one. The guys on weekends have been doing the pump houses, they've done bids. They are able to go beat out the wastewater treatment plant itself. That's their office, usually. The guys don't have to come in to expect places, they're already there. We're getting, it's been bad. They've been able to do sidewalks, they've cleared them out. Today, we did a couple of patch jobs that they had formed up and got bid for. I really like it so much.
Right, here, thanks. Thanks, Mike.
City building official?
I have nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you, Brett. No more reports then, city council?
I attended the railroad board of directors meeting, and as I told last week, the Star Trains are enormously popular. Only they've booked solid through 2020. They're now wanting us, at least the railroad, to put together a schedule for Star Trains for 2021. Of course, they have to partner with Great Basin in order to make that happen. But there's an enormous amount of interest in those Star Trains that should fill some of our hotels and bring up that revenue, which has been such a topic of discussion earlier this evening.
Otherwise, that's it. Jim?
I attended the RTC meeting, my first one, and it was quite interesting. And you have some plans for the future, I don't know, want to like it or not. We'll find out, see about increasing fuel taxes. Unfortunately, wasn't able to attend, we examined it in the road.
Another for you.
Prior commitment, and I returned from Las Vegas today after attending the meeting of the force of security. After I'm off vacation another month, I will be officially retired on September 4th. So I'll be out of battle a little more, see, obviously, you see me a lot, just observing and we'll see how we go probably next year, so congratulations, thank you.
Your report?
Ernie?
As of the fact, I'm still working with the state taxes, which is a civil and we're going to increase revenue for my proposed passes and everything. That's a lot of the question.
Thank you. I have nothing to report at the moment, except to note that we will have Congressman Stephen Horstur here tomorrow. He will be at city hall in the morning, giving comments from people and when this town hall is that evening, I'll be there.
Absolutely, time is one thirty-three, so tomorrow.
Okay. I stand for him. He'll be there in the early afternoon, then I'll be over the library, so. If anybody can stop by and talk to him, I'm sure that would be great. Item six, items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the municipal utility board. Item one, board members, city clerk Lee, city engineer Alberg, discussion for possible action, approval of grant of easement and grant of construction easement agreement between the city of Ely and Robert Shure and Chardons for joint plans with right of survivorship. I will give any motion on this item.
I would like to make a disclosure at this time. The Sheers do have a bunch of property to my father Keith Carson's land. I do not feel that impacts my judgment at this time.
And the recommendation of the municipal utility board?
It was tabled because Mr. Shear wanted access granted, and that has been addressed. So you can file?
Yeah, I'm free to turn the question over, because there was a concern that he wanted access to his property from the west via the agreement that has been amended to reflect that within the last 24 hours. I want that to be cleared with the council. It's really simple, it's basically the universal language of him granting us our easement, essentially. And it basically just says that he would have access to a gate that Endot will install at their expense, and that he will have access over to the city's and there along the corridor that's going to be covered with the drainage ditch to access his property from the west.
That being the case, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the grant of easement and construction easement agreement between the city of Ely and Robert Shure and Chardons for joint plans.
What's the ownership?
Right, second?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have a question for the attorney. Did you talk to the landlords then? Because I do know in the past, there was some miscommunication with the old attorney. So I just want to make sure that the landlords are happy with the way this is going.
So I wouldn't necessarily describe it as happy. I didn't be with them at length today. I think on the whole, they're somewhat disappointed with the lack of transparency potentially from the prior attorney who was working on this and definitely from Endot. I don't think it's insurmountable. They have some concerns that they brought to me. I'm not really ready to put those out right now, because I asked Mr. Shear to compile a list of them. And I don't want to overspeak, but I have an impression that the approval of this agreement will not be affected by this concern, that they're merely communication concerns about what's going to take place.
How the science proceeded and things like that?
He has some very sort of minute questions. I mean, there are some flags on this property that he doesn't understand. I mean, there are some flags on his property that he doesn't understand what they're marking off, because they don't appear to be in the agreement. Just things that I couldn't answer, that hopefully BJ can get from NDOT, and I mean, they're obviously not reflected in the.